I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yes, yes, great. Well, it is 7:04 and I'd like to call the meeting to order. Thanks everyone for attending and the first order of business is for oral communications. These are items that the public may wish to bring to the planning commission's attention, but that we're not allowed per rules to address today. So I'll open it up to the attendees and it seems like Betsy Morgan Thaler may have an oral communication. Is that right?
Yes, but through the chair if we could do the roll call quickly.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. I'm a little rusty. Go ahead.
Yeah, just quick roll call just for the for the record. Commissioner Golden.
I'm here.
Commissioner Coughsill.
I'm here.
Commissioner Tark.
Here I am.
Vice Chair Taylor.
Present.
Chair Haskell.
I am present. Okay. Great.
So then for oral communications, we're going to let Betsy talk and here she comes.
How do you do commissioners Laura, Dylan, directors? And I wanted to point out just a couple of things. One is I tried to use chat as I'm able to do in town council meetings. Because I was going to give you a perfunctory change to an amendment to the minutes, which I can speak again during the minute approval time if you want me to speak again. But it's it's pretty straightforward and I find chat helpful for these administrivia things. So you might as well and the town council uses it. So there's that precedent to consider. Also, I have noticed that it is possible at your discretion, the chair's discretion, to carry on, you know, limited back and forth. And and I precede the next comment by making that point. Just to ask for my own calendar purposes, does this planning commission intend to meet again this year? Two weeks from today? I know it's standard that you meet every two weeks, but you seem to cancel more than half of your meetings. It would just be helpful to have a heads up in advance if possible.
Laura, if it is in my discretion, do you have any input on our plans for the remainder of the year?
We have not confirmed yet if there'll be a meeting on the 16th. There's a fairly good chance it will be canceled. But we have not confirmed yet.
Okay, so Ms. Morgan Thaler, if if you wanted to chat, what are you're not able to do it? Is that what you're saying?
It has been disabled. The host has disabled attendee chat.
So we've disabled the chat because the town council meetings have been having some issues with either Zoom bombing or bots, but probably Zoom bombing of people joining the chat and posting things that are not part of the meeting or productive. So since I'm staffing this meeting myself and there's no other staff person to run the Zoom, we'll be disabling the chat for those purposes. So we'll have to rely on the raise the hand feature where we have more control over those things.
Okay, so Laura, would you recommend that we wait till the approval of the minutes in order to take those comments?
That would typically be my recommendation. So the commission may want to consider the order in which we review the minutes. You're familiar with the council reviews the minutes at the beginning of their meeting. Since we have more interest in the minutes than we typically do, that could be something we could discuss to move the minutes to the beginning. That way people can comment on them. So that's that would be my recommendation if you'd like to do that moving forward.
Okay, does anyone on the commission have an issue with addressing the minutes at the beginning of this meeting? No, okay. Let's go ahead and do that then, since it seems that Ms. Morgan Thaler may have some comments. However, I do note that there's another attendee whose hand is raised during oral communications. So I think the first thing to do would be to see what that other oral communication is. And then we can move the approval of the minute to the beginning ahead of the normal agenda. Does that sound right?
Yes, sounds good to me.
Sounds like a good practice. So I'll just leave Betsy here since we know she's going to comment in just a moment. So we'll just put Betsy on mute, but she'll be able to talk in a few minutes and then I will unmute Tim Clark.
Okay. Mr. Clark?
Yes, my name's my name's Tim Clark and I'm here as a representative of the Ladera Community Church, which many of you might know from driving down Alpine Road. We're at 3,300. I'm giving you a heads up that we're likely to bring forward to you next year. A proposal for, we've been admitted to the affiliated housing program by town council. And we expect to have a proposal for building some kind of affordable housing on that site. I'm advised by the town manager that that will require a change in the housing element, which will need to go through through the planning commission. And I wanted simply to inform you of our intent to do that sometimes in 2021.
Okay, well, thank you for joining tonight and for that heads up. I will suggest that you work with Laura and Dylan to make sure that that's appropriately agendized and that we have a fulsome chance to go over the proposal. I assume you're you're connected with them, but if not, they can be reached at the town the town center on the public website information to connect with them.
Yeah, we've been dealing with the town manager and our next step is to submit some kind of a letter of request to have a review done so that we can amend the housing element. So that is, that's the state that we are right now. And I would also note that I think Laura, perhaps in her first month on the job, walked our side. So she will be somewhat familiar with this half an acre that we have.
Okay, all right. We appreciate that heads up and thank you for participating.
All right. Thank you for the opportunity.
Sure. Okay, so I'm going to our agenda, but rearranging it to handle the approval of the the minutes first. So item number five would go to item number one before the new business. So I think we should hear from Ms. Morgan Thaler on her comments on the minutes and then we'll go through with the commission's comments on the minutes. So these are at red page 88, it seems, in the packet.
Thank you, Chair. I it's a very small change. On December the 4th, on page five, I was talking about my experience in the small wine business. And I said that I was the CFO and not the CEO. Accidentally, it was recorded as CEO. I am sure my brother would turn over. 1980 to 82, so real rusty and a long time ago, but I started, yeah. Anyway, just want to change CEO to CFO.
Okay, but the minutes that we were going to look at this evening were from October 21st.
Yes, this is true. And Chair, you might remember that last time when we met, we approved something like five meetings worth of minutes. And honestly, I did not digest those. I didn't even quite realize what was happening. It's uncustomary to to take on quite so many minutes of an approval. So I was hoping you would waive this change.
Sure. So procedurally though, let me just clarify what we're doing. On our normal agenda, it was to approve the October 21st minute. So I think we're still going to do that next. Laura, are we able after the minutes have been approved by the commission to go back and make an adjustment? It is a minor adjust, well, depending on her brother's view, it's a minor adjustment. But are we able to do that just procedurally?
I really couldn't say.
Serious, serious jump, serious, Siri was trying to answer the question.
That's such a minor change, but I just want to double check and make sure that we can make that very minor change. So if I'm allowed to do it administratively, I will. Otherwise, we would have to put it on an agenda for you to adopt amended minutes. So let me check on the procedure and if I can do it administratively, I will.
Thank you.
Okay, just to clarify, does anyone on the commission have any concerns if Laura's able to do that to enable her to to support that minor adjustment subject to any more formal procedures we need to follow for good protocol? Everyone okay?
Yeah, actually, not surprisingly, I do. If we do, if there is administrative change to a decision that's already been approved by the commission, please feel free to make a notation of it. It's like a memo to file. But it's been, it's an approved document. And in order to properly record it, it would need to come back to the planning commission, be voted on again to rescind the previous and then to adopt the amendment. Seems like a bad use of time for this change. If there is a modification, just and you can do it administratively, please just do it through note to file. And and proceed that way. It's bad precedent. It's like bad practice to to make a modification of an approved document.
Okay, Laura, we'll let you get back to us in the next meeting on how this is resolved, whether it's a note to file or other recommended procedure. There's more to that. We don't see a major issue, but as a policy, we're trying not to go back and and adjust for these things. So we'll we'll try to figure this out as simply as possible and and move forward, recognizing that there were a lot of minutes last time. So.
Thank you for that understanding.
And I want to make sure I didn't hear everything correctly. What was the date of that meeting, Betsy?
It was December the 4th and it was on page five. I'm pretty sure it's red page five.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Okay, so since we did agree to go through the minutes first, although okay, does anyone have any changes to the minutes of October 21 on the commission?
I actually did have one on red page 101, page 14 of the actual minutes. I'm in there as there's a phrase that says the response to Mr. Goulden's question is X, but there's no question. So I think we lost the question in there.
Okay, we can go back and review for the specific question. Do you think that the other surrounding information captures?
Yes, no, I didn't. In fact, I guess I'm being a little nitpicky because it reads just fine. It's not going to change anything. I don't know if there was any more, if I just had a simple question or a complicated one. But it it's obviously not there.
Oh, wait, you know what? When I read it, I've seen this before with myself. I think they're saying they're implying that your question was about the five to eight foot adjustment and that it would not satisfy the kings. I've seen this sentence construction before that it's like in response to your question, here's the answer. So we know that the question was, would the five to eight foot adjustment satisfy the kings?
Yeah, so sometimes the sometimes the person who types up the minutes for us will condense it. If the question that you ask is specifically then linked to that address than they are that answer, then they construct it as one sentence. So instead of saying this is the question and this was the answer, is that, does that construction, that sentence construction capture it in the way that you feel is accurate? Or would you rather see your question detailed?
I think it's fine. I think it's fine.
Okay.
Okay, anyone else have any? I have a couple, but.
Fine.
No? Okay. So and some of these are just, please go back and listen to the transcript and make sure it's accurate. So one of them is on page 93, red page 93. The last full paragraph in the middle, it says, Mr. Kong said that Mr. Spiegel clearly sees value there or he would not be trying to take it away from the cons. It doesn't read well. If that's what he said, that's what he said, but it didn't seem to flow right. And then on the top of page, red page 96, the first paragraph, Commissioner Tark said about three lines down at the end, it said, but did no tree removals? Maybe just say did not remove trees or something. It just struck me as strange. Then on page 101, red page 101, it's the middle of the page. And it says, Chair Haskell said she doesn't understand about the tree issue and possibly isn't concerned about it. I'm sure I didn't say it that way. And I I don't know what I said, but if it is, it's possible, I said, I'm not sure whether or not to be concerned. So if you can go back and listen to the transcript there. And then about four lines below that, it says, where he wanted to effectively hilltop the top? I'm not sure what that means. So check that transcript as well. And then I go to red page 107, last paragraph. I'm not sure about six or seven lines down that I said, even if they wanted to get together, it would be a rather stilted conversation, but it is possible. I don't, just listen to that, make sure it's accurate. And the reason I'm I'm emphasizing the accuracy is because this has been appealed and I want to make sure that the actual statements are more precise. And that's it. Okay. All right, so we, if there's no other modifications, we need a motion to approve the minutes as amended.
I'll make that a motion.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, as amended. Oh, yes.
I'm going to abstain because I wasn't there.
Okay, thank you, Greg. Thanks for that correction. Okay, so three, so all in favor, one abstaining though. The minutes are approved as amended. All right, then I think we can go back to the the original agenda. And the first item is a new business item, request for an exception to utility undergrounding at 70 Stone Gate. Does the staff have a report on this?
Yes, I do. Can everyone see my screen?
Yes.
Sorry, we cannot, Mike and Diane, but again, apologies for not having the video up.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the commission. So this item, this item before you is an exception request to the town's utility underground requirement at 70 Stone Gate Road. The subject property is located on the right side of Stone Gate Road, traveling from the intersection of Bertola Road and Stone Gate. The lot was created as a part of the Stone Gate subdivision in August 1948 and is within the RE residential estate zoning district. The surrounding uses include one and two story homes. On November the 20th, 2019, the homeowners contractor submitted a building application for a minor addition and interior remodel of an existing residence that consequently consequently requires an upgrade to the existing electrical service from 100 amps to 200 amps, according to the homeowner's exception request letter. This electrical service upgrade triggers the towns, the town codes requirement that overhead service onsite, also known as the service drop, be relocated in an underground trench. However, town code also allows for exceptions to this requirement if the planning commission determines the requirement is not feasible or practicable and no reasonable alternative location or design for installation. The homeowners were informed of this requirement and the exception process by town staff prior to this November, the 20th, 2019 permit submittal and therefore preemptively submitted the exception request on October the 22nd, 2019. So according to the homeowners in their request letter, due to the location of several established trees on site, trenching would adversely impact the health of these trees. The homeowners' arborist report identifies the affected trees and potential health impacts. Specifically, the report identifies several well-established live oak trees, which is a protected species under town code, and three fruit trees recently planted by the owner. Recently planted by the owner would be affected. The report notes that, quote, trenching would have damaging consequences for several trees at this site, end quote, and recommends that, quote, trenching in close proximity to the tree trunks is not advisable, end quote. And so the picture on the screen indicates the homeowners submitted photo of the the service drop or the service pole on the property. And then staff found the same pole with the overhead wires or the overhead service, Google Street View. And then this is a zoomed in picture of the the service on top of the pole. And then the red line indicates the approximate location of the the service drop to the residence. And then staff also wanted to provide, this is a 2010 utility plan. It's a, it was submitted for a 2010 town permit. So staff is just reusing this for reference. And staff also wanted to note on this plan that the red line indicated is the overhead or the service drop that goes from the pole to the to the the meter for the existing residents. So in accordance with town code, the planning commission has the authority to grant an exception to the requirement, the undergrounding requirements, if they determine that the underground installation is not feasible or practicable, practicable, and there is no reasonable alternative location or design for the installation of the underground lines. Historically, the planning commission has used the determination of undergrounding costs relative to the valuation or size of the project, undergrounding trench, underground trenching potential impacts on trees and complications due to physical conditions such as slope, underground utility locations, et cetera, as grounds for granting the exception. Staff concludes that this exception request falls under both the tree impact and high cost categories of determination. So in addition to an arborist report detailing the impacts of trenching on existing trees, the homeowners provided a $35,415 quote from their contractor for the additional undergrounding work. This roughly equates to $236.10 per linear foot of trenching for the project based on the estimated 150 feet of trenching distance required onsite to satisfy the town's underground undergrounding requirement. Thus, the additional cost burden of the strict application of town code to the homeowners equates into a roughly 9% increase in the overall project cost. Therefore, staff recommends granting an exception to undergrounding requirements, given that the location of existing trees and the additional cost burden to the applicant make the requirement not feasible or practicable and there is no reasonable alternative location or design for the installation of the underground lines. Thus, planning commission should, one, move to find the project categorically exempt pursuant to section 15302, subsection D of the sequel guidelines. And two, move to approve the requested exception to the town's utility undergrounding requirement. This concludes staff's presentation and we are available for any questions the commission may have. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Dylan. So the process for the the public is that the commission first asks any questions that it has of staff. And then the applicant is able to make a a statement. And then we'll look for public comment. So are there any initial questions by the commission?
Yes.
So Dylan, I'm curious, this was filed in October 2019 and it's December 2020. What happened in the last year?
So interesting component, we actually had this project on the, I believe it was the March, the 18th, planning commission, right before we were to, we shut down due to COVID. And the the project, we didn't resume application submittals or public hearings until recently. And the homeowners were not available for an October hearing. Staff reached out to them to determine if they would be available. And so this was the next logical place in the agenda for us to put them. So short answer is COVID-19 actually caused the intense delay.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, Anne?
Yeah, I had one. Dylan, how did you? You, it seems like you might have concluded that this was the undergrounding was too expensive compared to the project. But how did you, and it's say 9%, how did you decide that 9% was over a threshold?
Based on previous experience and previous approvals that the planning commission has made historically, I don't believe there's an actual threshold. The the code doesn't have any specific guidance on these matters. And so based on, I would say a reasonable person standard, but it is subjective. I would say a reasonable person standard, but it is subjective. And so, that was staff's determination, but obviously that is, um, the final decision is left up to the planning commission on if they, if they feel that a 9% additional cost is, um, a finding to exempt or accept the project from undergrounding, um, in addition to the, the tree, the tree impacts.
Yeah, and then on the tree impact, how much investigation or how many, um, attempts did the homeowners make to find reasonable alternative locations, and does the town staff kind of interrogate and ask about, oh, well, how about here, how about there? Um, I guess I'm asking how much investigation was put into alternative locations?
Um, I'll lightly answer, and then I'll have, I'll defer to the homeowners to, to answer, uh, in terms of the investigative process. My understanding is a lot of the location of the trenching is driven by PG&E. Um, in terms of, uh, my understanding is they prefer a straight shot. However, in terms of what staff requires as far as an application being complete to, to present to planning commission, the exceptions are, uh, they have only occurred recently, uh, 2019 and 2020. And so the process, we're still working out the mechanisms. So we generally require that the applicant provide an arborist report. We also, um, require them to provide a trenching quote from a contractor or PG&E if they can, um, receive one. My understanding is there's been challenges because you have to put a deposit down for them to begin any work. So, um, in response to the question of what type of, um, interrogative practices, if you will, um, the, the staff performs for these applications. It's as long as the information that I previously mentioned is provided, and there's substantial information and there's substantial, uh, opinions from an arborist, for example, that, um, determines that this, this, this requirement would be impactful, um, that would be sufficient enough for staff to present it to planning commission. Um, and to the, to the point of the alternate locations, I defer to the O'Donnells to weigh in more.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, and, and
Sure, go ahead.
Sorry, in the, in the interest of, uh, being efficient here, I probably should have asked the applicant to make any statements that it has before we enter into the question, uh, session with the commission. Um, so if it's okay with Nicholas and, and John, um, and, um, uh, Craig, I'll, if it's okay, I'll, I'll ask the applicant to make the comments. They probably shouldn't have invited them to make earlier, and then we can continue with the Q and A session.
Sure, so, so this is Mike, so thank you for the opportunity to, to present to the commission. So with response to the question that was raised, we were advised by our contractor that basically what PG&E requires is a straight-line trenching, that, that's what they want. We did talk to our arborists about, you, you know, could you vary it a little bit here or there? Basically, that entire area, if you look at the, it, it pictures, is basically a fruit tree orchard that we have planted in that area. Aside from the significant live oaks that are directly in the path, there's also another oak, um, where the, where the power junction box ended up being, that wasn't noted in the report, that I think also would be impacted, no matter how you came at it, you'd have to go near that, that, that trunk to get to where the power box is now. And the other thing that, that was not mentioned, but there's this very magnificent moderate pine over 80 feet tall that's sitting, you know, directly in that area. So, and that's, that's right where the pole is, where the power would come down. So I just don't think there really is any realistic alternative. You actually look at the area where you could have, you know, a trench starting at the, at the utility pole, where there's major trees, ending up at the power box, where there's another large, large oak. You, you know, no matter how you zigzag it, it would still end up at those two spots, and that's what the problem is.
Does the applicant have any other comments to make before we go back to the Q and A?
Um, oh, the other thing I would just note, if you look at the pictures, the actual power line is basically invisible, it's hidden in those trees. So you really can't observe it at all. I don't think there'd be any visual benefit whatsoever from the trenching. And I don't think any of the other streets or any of the other houses, uh, on our streets have underground trenching. In other words, all their wires are still, are still up there. At such time as the whole street goes underground, we could, we would, of course, be willing to, to do that at the same time as everyone else. You know, assuming it would be done safely without damaging the trees.
Okay. All right, thank you. Um, unless the applicant has anything else, I'll bring it back. So Anne, or do you have any other questions, or shall we move through the commission for questions?
Yeah, go ahead and ask other people questions, yeah.
Okay.
Let other people.
Okay, John, how about you?
Um, are we just doing questions or discussion?
Questions right now, sorry, I should have.
Sorry, I, I, um, no, I don't have any other questions.
Okay. Um, Craig, how about you?
No questions.
Okay, Nicholas?
Yeah, so the question is, you know, for staff, and that is, what is the purpose of the ordinance? Is it fire, health, and safety aesthetics?
Uh, great question. Um, let me see if I can pull up the code section and see if there is a termination.
Let's see if we've got some language that leads into it. Some of our code sections do and others don't. So Dylan, see if you can find that. And I have understood it to be largely about aesthetics. Um, and I think, you know, there's been increasing interest in fire safety, obviously, um, over recent years, and so I think that that has become more a part of it. Um, this commission has had some discussion in the past about how that, weighs into these applications, and we haven't been able to find anything further, but I think that that is an interesting discussion to take up. Maybe, for example, with the wildfire prep committee or with other, um, town committees that are thinking about these issues really closely, um, and developing more expertise around that. So I think that that's becoming more a part of it, but I think it was mostly based on aesthetics to start.
There's a statement in one of the letters, either on this project or, or prior, uh, from the consultant that says that it's purely aesthetic. And that is helpful and leads to a question of, uh, were neighbors properly noticed? Did, were there any responses which I may have missed? Uh, or are the neighbors silent on this? Uh, if the issue is potentially a fire-related issue, do we have a letter from the fire marshal indicating whether the fire marshal cares if it's not a fire-related issue, and I believe that Commissioner Taylor schooled me on the nature of, uh, the change in voltage that may exist, uh, uh, previously. Um, it would be helpful to see what the, uh, marshal had to say. So that's the reason for my, for my question.
I'll take the public comment question first, and then I'll refer back to the language of the code. So, uh, we standard, uh, noticing of 300-foot radius to adjacent neighbors. That notice was sent out before the Thanksgiving holiday, so it was the 23rd of November. No public comments were received, um, related to the matter. So, uh, neighbors were adequately noticed per town, um, procedures. Related to the code section, um, attachment seven of the staff report has the section of the code related to undergrounding, uh, electrical, uh, overhead electric service lines is the language that the code uses. And, um, just in a quick reading of it again, there isn't any language that talks about the intent or the, end result, it just provides, when used for public utility purposes, so, it, it's, the code doesn't provide any, um, reasoning for the, the requirements. If that answers the question as best as I can, based on the code language.
Yeah, it sounds like it's all silent. So it sounds like one is silent as to what we're trying to achieve. It does lay out what the requirements are, which is good. And, uh, it was appropriately noticed, uh, and there were no comments.
That is correct. That is correct.
So any other questions?
I was gonna add in there, um, if you look on red page 54, there's a, a comment about the 1990 ordinance amendment, indicating that there, it seems to be in response to concern over overhead TV cable lines, uh, which I read as aesthetic, um, versus, you know, power concerns or things like that.
All right.
Yeah, I did think of another question, um, if Dylan or Laura has insight into this. Do you know, uh, or have, uh, thoughts about PG&E asking the undergrounding to be straight? Uh, I mean, on the, my first reaction to it is it's like, oh, a kind of a bureaucratic, you know, statement, uh, of course, it'd be nice if it was straight, but that, in Portola Valley, that is, uh, kind of unreasonable, right? The chance that you can go from the power pole to the nearest point in the house and not hit a big tree, a septic tank, uh, French drain, this or that is kind of unreasonable. I think it makes way more sense around here if we're gonna underground to, you know, go this way and then that way and miss many of the obstacles.
Agreed. Um, I would say from my, from my experience, with the second item that is on the agenda, 142 Crescent, they did reach out to PG&E. Uh, the challenge is, is, um, they will give you some information, but then if you want to talk specifics, you have to put a deposit down. But from my understanding is the, the easiest for them, as you put it in a bureaucratic sense, is to just run it straight shot, um, from the service pole to the weatherhead to the electric meter. I think mostly just for, uh, demarcation purposes for 811, for example. Because I think if you start doing a lot of, um, zigzagging, if you will, that, um, increases the cost. And additionally, uh, the, having to, 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 to mark that would be more time-consuming. I think those are the two main factors. The simplest and the easiest is kind of where they're going, um, for this, but
That is consistent with so many PG&E policies, where they want things done in a consistent manner so that they know what to expect on different sites. And certainly, my experience is that they provide very little flexibility.
Yeah. But do they have veto power if we told the homeowner, like, okay, um, you have to underground, go this way and then that way, and put it in? Um, what, what happens with PG&E? Do, do, do they get to not hook up the power if it's done that way?
There's certain very strict standards that I've encountered over the years with PG&E that you absolutely must meet. Otherwise, they really will not connect to you. I don't know that this is, meets that threshold, right? But I think they probably would have some sort of standard that is the bare minimum that has to be met. And then at that point, you know, there's, there's not a choice. I, we, I just don't know the specifics of this type of application of where their kind of bare minimum or where their flexibility is or not.
So, so this is Mike, so I don't know exactly that either, what the flexibility is, but our contractor did specifically tell us that if PG, PG&E is not happy with the proposed plan, they will not hook up power.
Thank you. Any other questions? Otherwise, we'll go to public comment. Yes, Craig?
Well, I was just gonna tell, I mean, they, they clearly put in something besides straight shots because poles often aren't in front of somebody's house. So then they've gotta come down the street and turn down, so it's possible, I think they're probably just trying to minimize the number of turns because it makes it a lot harder to pull the wires.
Yeah. Okay, thanks.
Okay. All right, um, I don't know if we have any members of the public that have comments on this topic. I do see two hands up. Uh, the first one is Nan Shostak. If she has comments on this topic, please weigh in.
Yeah, hi, can you hear me? I tried to unmute.
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, a couple of, um, comments here. First of all, I, I emphasize with the homeowner, um, we rebuilt our house five years ago and had to upgrade the electrical service. We did trench about 300 feet, and it could not be a straight shot. There's at least one kink in the line from the pole to the house. Um, so, you know, PG&E did not have a problem with that. And the other thing is, um, you know, um, Commissioner Targ, I think, brought up a very important point, and that is fire safety. I'm not so concerned about the aesthetics, although, you know, we do care about that. But when the, um, when the electrical wires are so close to trees, as they seem to be in this case, from the, at least from the photograph, you know, I cringed when I saw it. It does pose a fire safety. It's not just to the particular lot, but to the whole town. As we know, downed power lines can cause fires, and we're a little bit sensitive to that right now. It would be very, very helpful, I think, to, um, investigate. Um, this Commissioner Targ suggested, um, whether the fire marshal has an opinion about this and, um, whether fire safety can be a component of, um, granting waivers to the, um, to the, to the, what did you call it, the code, the general plan? In this, uh, in any given case.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, the next person with her hand up is Judith Murphy. Uh, any comments?
Uh, it might be that if all you need is the financial finding, then these comments will be moot. But in terms of the trees, the language of those reports make it sound very clear that the, um, trench would be untenable, but in the application, I didn't see a map, and the map that Dylan put up, when I looked carefully at that map while it was on screen, it looked like a pretty straight shot. It looked like that the, the several oaks were not of heritage oak size. There's a large old pine, but those large old pines are coming out all over town. There's an encouragement to take those out for fire safety reasons now. And that pine, you know, is getting near the end of its life and isn't gonna be there long anyway, and for fire reasons, they should probably be thinking about turning it out, even if they weren't doing a project. And, and I think recent fruit trees wouldn't be enough to really say, well, we can't run it through here because they've recently planted fruit trees. So if there are way of really looking at a site map that showed you what trees were actually there and the size of the trees that were actually there, because if you look at Dylan's map, I don't know if you can put that map back up again, Dylan.
Well, but finish your comments, and then we can figure out how to
Right, well, then you can see what I'm, what I'm talking about. If you look at that line across the, there's a six-inch oak. That's small. There's a 10-inch oak, there's a 20, there are two big pines. Then there's, there's the run all across the whole place, almost up to the house that's open. And then there's a 10-inch oak, so I don't see anything. If, if you really look at numbers in this map, if this map is still anywhere near accurate, that would support saying that the trees are in the way of the trench. Then that's it.
Well, we'll take that back for discussion. Anyone else in the attendees have any comments for the, uh, commission to consider? I don't see any other hands up.
Yeah, yeah. So, so I, so I have a question for the last speaker, if I may. This is Mike. Are you an arborist?
Hold on, there, there's not supposed to be, uh, back and forth. Um, I'll, I'll, I'll let you ask the question, but, um, we also are gonna be discussing this next. So maybe you can put something out there for us to discuss rather than a question.
Sure, sure. So, so, so our arborist concluded in his professional opinion that the proposed trenching would significantly adversely affect the health of the oak trees, all of which are protected under the Portola Valley statutes. In addition, he concluded the moderate pine tree was healthy, and it did not need to be removed.
Thank you. Thank you. We'll bring that back as part of the discussion. All right, unless there's, um, okay, thank you. I'm just trying to figure out if there's any other hands up. I don't see any. So with that, let's bring it back, and I'm gonna start with Anne and, and let her, uh, make comments, uh, for discussion.
Yeah, um, so let me start with the cost. We reviewed a project last November, so a year ago, that required that required underground trenching. And the addition of the underground trenching compared to the project was forty to fifty percent of the project. And I and I think my fellow commissioners, we all agreed, no, that was too high. So we granted an exception in that case. And as I recall, we had maps. There were many, many obstacles in the way. It was really hard to redesign a trenching that wouldn't hit a bunch of obstacles. I don't feel that way about these. These costs of this one's nine percent, I guess, and the other one is even less. I feel like, you know, it's subjective, but no, under ten percent. No, that's a cost the homeowner probably needs to bear. Surely, when the town council passed these rules, they knew it was going to cost more, right? It for sure wasn't going to be a zero cost item. So there was some amount of cost that's expected. I think for me, around ten percent or under is, no, it's kind of there. Okay, so I'm not tempted to grant an exception based on cost. Now, on the trees, of course, I would not want important and good trees to get damaged. I I have to ask, I'd like to ask the staff, I would always like a really good map on these projects. And I'm sorry, I'm rolling both cases into one, but they have the same issue. It's, of course, a trenching company comes and draws a straight line, right? From the pole to the house, like the straightest shot. And if I ran a trenching company, I'd be given those quotes, too. And there's this PG&E request, and I understand that, that strater is simpler. But I feel like we should push back. If you could instead, let's say, make one kink, come down on this property on that small map, you know, kind of go down the left of the property and then cut over. Would it not not hurt trees? When I rode my bike by this morning, this is the one it's that the trees in question are quite unusual, right? It's the one with there's a pine tree. I'm trying to draw this for people about this big. And then an oak tree that overlaps, if it was a Venn diagram, it would be on top of it. And then another oak tree. So there it's kind of weird to have trees so squished. And I definitely am influenced by Judith Murphy, who's on the Conservation Committee about the trees, that they're not heritage oaks and pines are, you know, on the way getting pushed out. So I hate to see us not follow the guidance of the town council, which, you know, is the representatives of the residents, to not push for undergrounding. You know, if if people want to request an exception, I feel like we need a map where people really show why you can't go here and here. And I'm also not influenced by the small new fruit trees. If they're the ones I could see from the road, you know, they're quite quite small at this point. It feels like there's room to go around and not hurt them. So my tendency is to not grant an exception based on the cost and to ask for a trench that say, has one kink to best avoid the trees. I realize that'll cost a little more, but I doubt it's going to put it up in a range that makes me feel like, oh, you shouldn't have to do that based on cost. That's it.
All right, John, do you have comments?
Yes. So overall, my thinking along these was was on the where are we going precedence wise? And I think I come down with Ann that, you know, if we get into saying a ten percent increase or a five percent is too much, then I don't think, I think at that point, we're saying anybody doesn't have to follow to kind of request an exception and we've set a precedent, but that's that's okay, and we're going to grant that. I don't believe that was what the intent of moving towards undergrounding that we we, you know, we grant exceptions all the time on a relatively small cost increase. I was actually. So I don't think that's a reason to do it that way. I was actually quite interested in Nicholas's questions about fire, because it does appear to me that historically, it's all been a discussion of aesthetics. But but if there are other reasons to do it, I think that just increases, you know, the the impetus we would have to uphold what the town has put in place here. With respect to, I don't think I'd want to get into trying to design trench lines and kinks. I kind of think I'd leave that up to the owners. And, you know, if they they want to risk the tree, I think that's possibly okay on that line, if you will. So those are my thoughts.
Nicholas?
So I'm a little torn, and my thinking is the following. As one is, I think that really there is an issue of precedence. And the language provides a couple of things. It says that if it's not practicable or feasible or feasible, and there isn't an alternative essentially that would make it practical or and there's no reasonable alternative or location designed for the underground lines presumably that is practical or feasible. So I I think we have to get into the question of having a reasonable basis for whether or not you can have and it's less than a straight line. And I don't know enough about that to have to have an opinion. I am a little concerned also about fire and about the purpose for which the ordinance was put in place. And if we do have an ordinance, we really ought to follow it, regardless of whether or not we think that it makes a whole lot of sense. Otherwise, we're assuming more authority than we really ought to. The other hand, I look at this and say, well, aren't we creating an additional barrier to to installing solar power? And that's probably also not what we're supposed to be doing either. But I don't think that's our decision to make. I think that's a town council decision to make. And if the town wants to modify its ordinance, it ought to do so. So I think that basically what we're saying is, is ten percent impracticable or feasible, assuming that there's some allowance for her or an exception to a straight line. And my thought is the answer is that doesn't sound impracticable or feasible. It may not be what I would want to do. But it's also not my lot to make. So I'm feeling kind of pushed in a direction to either have a determination by PG&E that you can't you can't have an exception to a straight line or else to go and do so and to install it. Because I think if we do make a different determination, we're essentially writing the ordinance out of the code, and I don't feel comfortable doing that.
Okay, Craig, any thoughts?
Yeah, so I certainly have sympathy with the homeowner. I mean, you know, anytime you feel like you're spending a lot of money on, you know, you had power when you started and forty or fifty thousand dollars later, you still have power. It's always frustrating to have to deal with those kind of things. So so I certainly have a lot of sympathy, and I think I understand why, you know, you filed for an exemption. On the other hand, I agree with Nicholas. I think we have to follow the ordinance. And in this case, I don't see that this exemption exemption is sort of something that the ordinance would have, you know, been subject to. So I think I kind of agree with the other commissioners at this point.
Okay. So from my perspective, I'm concerned about precedent and consistency. I think we've granted exemptions over the last many years that I've been on the account of the commission. And there are different, you know, our job is to apply the rule of, you know, our own judgment to what is practicable and feasible, cost being one element, but also the disruption to the property. So people can come out in different places on that, right? And in this particular case, I do feel that it isn't our job to be the arborist. They've got a professional arborist report that says the trees would be adversely impacted. I don't feel it's our job to decide whether the homeowner should remove trees or not. That's not part of this decision from my perspective. I also think that, you know, it is a judgment call about what percent of the project it would be. But if we're taking a ten percent number off of a straight line estimate and we're thinking that a kink can work at a cost that seems to be surprisingly high of four to six hundred dollars a foot, I think those costs get up there pretty quickly. So on balance, oh, let me address two other points. One is, over the years, when I've attended the town council meetings and what I've heard from the council is that the intent in adopting the undergrounding ordinance was to achieve a dream of, in my recollection, more aesthetics of undergrounding it. And I'm sure it had multiple reasons. But I've heard the town council members say that isn't going to happen because it's too expensive. So I I come with hearing from the council myself over attending their meetings, the idea that it is it's something that they they had a purpose for early on. And then, once they realized the costs, did not think that that goal would be achievable practically throughout the town. I don't know where they are today, but that's what I've heard in the past. And then, in terms of the fire precedent, I think that's certainly relevant and new. I actually think the right answer for that is to ask the town council to look at that, to look at whether undergrounding needs to be part of a fire planning policy and and to give us guidance on that. But this ordinance was not adopted in that with that set of issues and these current circumstances in mind. So to me, I feel it unfair to apply that, even though it's a very relevant and I would actually want the council to give us guidance sooner rather than later on that. I don't feel it's our job to take a ordinance that was designed for something else, is my feeling, and to apply it to protect something that is a valid thing to protect, but probably needs a more thorough treatment than than we're being asked to weigh in on on one property. So myself, I would be comfortable with the granting the the exception. But I recognize I'm in the minority. So I'm going to go through a poll and just see if anybody wants to make more comments. Craig's raising his hand. And then we'll take a straw poll after anyone else makes more comments.
So, yeah, so Judith, would you feel differently if the undergrounding actually was feasible? And the reason I ask that is I've been looking at Los Altos Hills. And they've started a sort of pilot project. And it actually does seem like it would be feasible for the town to do undergrounding. Whereas I think in the past, we have heard that, oh, well, this is just impossible and it'll never get done. And PG&E is saying, you know, multiple millions of dollars per mile. But I think there is a way forward on that. And I'm hoping sometime in the next year that the town council actually takes that up. So I think it's not, it's not necessarily, because if it was completely impossible, and I think a year ago, I I was sort of in that boat of this is never going to happen. And why are we asking people to spend money when it's not going to happen? I I don't feel that anymore. I feel like there's now an opening that we could move forward. And given the fire safety issues, I actually think it's pretty critical that we're going to move forward on it.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I, as a general rule, I I'm supportive of undergrounding. I wish it were feasible. I would love for it to be feasible. And even then, if the town could do it, there are going to be some properties where it's not feasible. And, you know, my own feeling is this is just not the the issue here before us. That this is both cost and feasibility in terms of the trees. And I'm suspicious that it's PG&E would buy into an ARC or whatever other alternative system might might be set up. But I do recognize I'm in the minority here. So I want to make sure that we we have a straw poll. It sounds like four would deny the the exception. Is that correct? Anyone else want to weigh in?
Laura wants to talk.
If I if I could, through the chair, as I've been listening to the discussion, it seems like this issue of feasibility is an important one, and there may not be enough information. And this may be, you know, we've had relatively few of these applications and few as this body to that you're looking for. And so the only thing I'm thinking of is, do you have enough information on feasibility in order to make this decision? Because one option that would be possible for the commission to take would be to continue this item and request additional information from the applicant. Perhaps they could get information from PG&E, provide more information about their trees and the circumstances to demonstrate that there is no other option that is feasible. And then that may provide the commission more of kind of the evidence that you're looking for. That's what I seem to be hearing. I don't know if I'm getting that right, but that that's, it feels like that's what I'm hearing from the commission. You may need more information to make the decision.
For me, that's accurate. How about for others?
That's right. And I can say that I'm willing to continue it if I'm asked to vote on it now. I don't have enough information to draw any other conclusion other than the experience of one individual who identifies that you can't have an excursion. My recent experience in undergrounding wire for exactly the same reason was that frankly, it wasn't very expensive and they had it follow the contours of a path. And it was signed off by PG&E. That's one person's experience, and I don't know what PG&E would do here. But either either new information has to be introduced showing that that can't be done or else or else it's at best an incomplete application.
So this is Mike O'Donnell, if I may. So I would be entirely comfortable with with that with that approach. What I would suggest is first, we would talk to our arborist, because I I believe he's going to say that because of where the trees are located, so close to both the utility pole and to the power junction, no matter how you zigzag it, that those protected oak trees would be adversely impacted because just where the the line has to start and end up is within their root system. So that would be the first thing I would like to ascertain if that's correct. And then we can certainly talk to PG&E as well to see what exactly they would require. We could present that information to the commission.
Ann, are you comfortable?
I heard the homeowner call these protected oaks, but Judith referred to them as not being heritage oaks. Or are 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 these words specific and do we?
It sounds like that's what we need to know, right? Of the things we would want to know, what is the status of these trees under the town guidelines and requirements? What is PG&E's perspective on a non-straight line? And and what's the feasibility of PG&E approving something that that is not a straight shot? What what else do we need to know?
I think a diagram to Commissioner Croft's questions, perhaps some photographs of the trees and the circumstances. So I think we need to paint a little bit of a stronger picture and have more supporting evidence.
Can we get input on the fire? If the fire marshal has any thoughts on this or we're hitting corrections?
Sorry, it's Michael I was going to say, so I am an attorney. I I will say that, of course, are very skeptical about sort of implying legislative intent unless it's specifically stated. So here I think the planning commission, or sorry, the the department has said there is no legislative intent on the statute with regard to fire protection. So I I just with all due respect, think that would be an overreaching to try to read that into the to the planning commission's, you know, mandate here to follow the law. There's just no evidence that that was the intent of the legislature to have that be part of this process.
If I may through.
Let me make one quick question to Laura. Laura, I don't know if you said you had definitively looked into that and there was nothing or whether you weren't, you hadn't done it, but there might be. Can you clarify that? And then I'll go to Nicholas.
Yeah, Dylan just looked at the code section as it's in the code. I think the thing that we could add for you would be any language that was included in the adopting ordinance. So sometimes there'll be some finding or language there when the ordinance was adopted. And so that does, I think, speak to intent and that may be helpful to the commission. So we could get that for you.
Okay. If you. Okay, Nicholas?
Director Russell, isn't it correct that the fire marshal has authority to review every building permit that comes that is issued by the town regardless of whether or not there is specific intent or not? Let me answer, let me, yeah, let me just say that's correct.
That's correct.
So I I appreciate the concern about overreach. It also goes to the question of practicability. If we were to read the issue of practicability, it would take into consideration multiple issues. And and not simply the the straight issue of 10%. It has to be taken into consideration at the whole project and the purpose. So I I appreciate the 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 admonishment by the applicant. Having the fire marshal take a review, as was suggested, doesn't seem like it is a bridge too far.
The fire marshal does review a large number of our projects under many different circumstances and certainly has the authority for every building permit. And so we route many of our projects to the fire marshal for review, even if there's not specific code language that directs that to happen. So that is a standard policy and procedure for many projects and something we could take up for these applications in the future for this one and for others.
Thank you for the clarification.
Yeah, the commission, I think, is aware of its code requirements and the ability to balance that, right? And to bring it into its decision making.
Okay. Craig, John, anything else you'd want to have clarified so we have the staff know exactly what it needs to require the applicant?
No, I think I'm covered on that. I I get that. My my other thoughts on this were, I think I was heading to be similar with Nicholas. If if I were, if it was necessary for me to vote tonight, I believe that I would say we cannot grant it. But I'm more than willing to 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 have further, you know, input on this.
Okay.
And through the chair, we have one person who has their hand up and it would be at your discretion whether you'd like to hear their comments or not.
Okay, I want to go to Anne first and she, and then we'll go to, it looks like Fred. So Anne first.
I agree with John. I'm I'm really happy to get more information. If I had to decide tonight, I'd not grant the exception. And I guess I want to say, I know this is fuzzy, but it's what's in my mind. When we look at these maps and the possibilities, I want to feel like people were, you know, a little bit creative about where the trenching went. I feel like the starting point is, of course, a straight line. And then inevitably you run into a tree because we're Portola Valley, right? So I want to feel like, I don't want it to be exhaustive, though, you know, they did just every permutation, but I just want to feel like when you look at a map, oh, what about putting a trench here and here? People have covered the kind of straightforward option.
Okay. I will ask Fred, who has his hand up, to make his point briefly. We don't normally take comments at this point, but in the interest of hearing everything and putting it on the table, what are your comments?
Could you have Fred introduce himself?
Yeah, Fred, you need to give your name and address.
Okay, I'm Fred Widler. I live on 1385 Westridge and I back onto Stonegate. So I wonder why I wasn't notified by the town. I'm an electrical engineer. So during the discussion, I had some additional thoughts and that is the impact on cost. Oh, also, I'm from Switzerland where everything is underground, so I'm pro underground and everything looks great. But in this case, I have to think the additional costs because of my experience with some friends. The additional cost is not just what it costs for the trenching. It's also the delay in the total construction, the traffic on Stonegate, the hauling away of all the dirt, the delay on the homeowner being able to move into his house. Where in Sunnyvale, the permits now to get PG&E to approve trenches, you know, can be two or three months in addition to. Another point is that PG&E has some sort of leverage on this whole thing because they're responsible. Their demarcation point is at the meter, and so that's why they fix the drop line if it fails and why they fix the underground. And another point is that there may be some vulnerability to an underground line also. There's earthquakes, there could be floods and things like that. And I walk my dog past the house all the time and I hated to see a bulldozer making a big road through there in order to dig a trench, you know, which is nice vegetation on trees, big and small. So that's my input.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And I guess the only other information I'd like to see because there there is varying information on the actual cost by PG&E because you've got to put a deposit down before they'll give you a cost. Maybe understanding a little bit more about that process and how accurate those estimates are, if there's any more to be had. All right, anyone else have any thoughts? Otherwise, we should move on to the next item on the new business.
I would recommend that you make a motion to continue the item so that we've got that in the record. And since we don't know how long it will take in order to collect this information, we would re-notice this item to the neighbors when we're ready to move forward, not be too certain, but it would just be to a future meeting.
Okay, and maybe you can check on the Fred's location and make sure he gets notified if he's within that standard area. Motion, please?
Make a motion to continue the request for the exception to utility undergrounding for 70 Stonegate Road.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, the message, the motion passes. Thank you, applicant, Mr. O'Donnell. And we'll move on to item number two on the new business, which is a request.
Thank you. Thank you to the commission and we will sign off.
Okay, thank you. Have a good evening. All right, request for acceptance to utility undergrounding requirement at 142 Crescent. Staff, do you have your report?
Yes, I do.
For the chair, a question for the chair and for the commission. In light of the similarities between these two applications, would you like us to give Dylan's full prepared presentation? Or would you like to take any kind of different approach at this time?
Can I suggest, following your lead, that we gather the information that we just discussed in the last project before we move forward? I I think continuation is going to make sense because I think otherwise we're going to have the same discussion and get to the same place. So unless another commissioner feels wildly differently, I'd suggest that we continue this and gather the same information we asked the last applicant.
Yeah, the, the, anyone else?
Yeah, I think that this is a good decision for the applicant to make. Unless we now determine that it's an incomplete application, in which case it should be withdrawn by staff. Otherwise, it leave it up to the applicant to determine what the applicant would like to do.
I kind of like, I feel like one big difference between these is hearing from the applicant. If the applicant has something to say that could influence me or us to not treat it the same.
Yeah, I think what I'd like to suggest is why don't we skip for right now Dylan's presentation? Ask the applicant. And I don't know, I'm assuming the applicant's on and listened to the last discussion, so we should have some context there.
Yeah, I'm here. This is Lance Downing.
Yeah, wait, wait a minute, Lance. So I think there are some similarities. I do want to hear from the applicant what he'd like to do, having heard the rest of the the prior presentation. But there are, there are differences in the scope and purpose and the like. So Lance, go ahead and and we welcome your your thoughts on your preference here.
Oh, thanks. Yeah, I I was able to hear the the previous exemption request. I I totally deferred to the the council or committee. I have a diagram of the property and some photos. So I think that fills in some of the gaps that I heard was missing on the previous. So if you, if you want to take a quick look, or I'm happy to defer. I think I wrote down the additional information that that was of interest. Probably the only significant one I have to add is I had my property inspected for fire safety as, you know, we're all concerned and in investing in fire hardening the property. And his take was that until the main street line comes down, undergrounding individual homes won't make a substantial difference in fire safety, which is disappointing. And so I I'm very interested in, you know, the entire town undergrounding. But that was, that was his take, which which, you know, made sense.
So Laura, in terms of obviously, these were brought forward because they have parallels. And if we proceed on this application before we have input on the bigger picture issues regarding the fire marshal as opposed to a fire report and, you know, what what the intent is on the legislature legislature. I'm not sure. I I would hesitate to move forward tonight on this one without having that information for this and the other one myself. Does that make sense? Is there a way we can think about distinguishing this sufficiently to move?
I think we want to be careful to keep the projects separate. And so I think it is useful for the record for the planning commissioners, perhaps say into the record that you are looking for the same information that we are looking for on the other application that you, if you feel that you don't have enough information to make a decision tonight, then you could say that into the record. You may wish to look at the applicant's materials in case that that does fill in the gap that you were looking for because they are different and they may have different things to share. If they want to, if Lance wants to share a screen or show any information that might help you, you may reach a different conclusion and I would just want you to make sure that you, you know what I mean, reach one conclusion or the other independent from the previous application.
So I don't know how we can do that without following our normal agenda on this by having a brief staff report and then letting the the applicant make his presentation. We can then decide if it's worth a full deliberation, but.
Well, we could have Dylan just highlight the key aspects of the project instead of kind of giving the detailed presentation. Is that? Is that how you'd like to proceed?
And at this point, I'm willing to withdraw my comment. I mean, I think if if we want to follow the standard practice so that we're treating both projects sort of in the same way and fairly, I I'm definitely okay with that.
Okay, I'd be more comfortable with that myself.
I think I I think after this discussion, I I think that's right. I think we should just go through the standard process.
Okay. All right, Dylan.
Am I doing a truncated staff presentation? Okay, all right, so I'm going to skip ahead. Few slides. And let me, I lost everybody. I have two screens. Okay.
And just to be clear, I'm looking at the beautiful faces of my brothers and sisters.
Okay, I have two screens because I I never can, let me see if this works. Does it? All right, can you, does it show everything blown up now? Full size? Okay. So the the one difference or the the specifics of this project are there are actually two building permits that are currently on file. There's one for a solar voltaic system. And there's also a second one that was an addition and remodel with an electric vehicle charging station as a component. And so the kind of the key difference is that a town building inspector went to the property for the solar, the solar permit and noted that the overhead electrical wires were interfering with the roof line and they recommended the relocation of the electrical panel by approximately 10 feet. And then the electrician subsequently recommended additional service to accommodate the EV charging station, which is a very common request that I see. And so as the applicant explained in their information, they actually, they have impacts, not just related to a tree, but also some underground utilities. So as the diagram notes, there's a French drain system. There's a water main, which is the blue line. And then the two existing oak trees that kind of go through the red line. So there's actually three items for this exception that are impacted by the undergrounding requirements. Staff just wants to note that one of the trees is identified as a live oak tree, so that is protected. And so that would be something that one of the trees would be protected under town code. Installing the utility line within a 10-foot radius of that tree would still impact it. So there may be some issues or concerns in terms of the arcing or the relocation of the line, not just a straight shot. Also, one important key is that the applicant did actually reach out to PG&E in concert with having a trench contractor come out. And that email was very insightful to staff because it noted that one PG&E wouldn't really do any more work until they submitted a deposit. Secondly, they they discussed a 200 to 400 per linear yard cost, and that's for not only the trenching, but also the conduit, the the running the lines, the conduit. And so the, there's kind of two competing quotes, both from the private contractor and both from PG&E. Other than that, I think that's pretty much, the cost increase is a 5%. That is based on the private trenching contract. That's not based on the, I use the definitive values, not the 200 to 400 that PG&E estimated because the unknown was, does that take into account just the conduit thing? Or does that ratchet down because they're only doing that? So that unknown, I kind of took out of the equation to provide at least some clarity and definitiveness. Other than that, I I think that covers all the bases in a truncated staff report. But if the commission has any questions, I'm I'm happy to run through the the gauntlet with it.
So what I'd like to do is ask the applicant to make any additional commentary or presentation he has, and then we can ask questions.
Hi, thanks again. No, I don't think, I think Dylan captured it quite well. We evaluated some alternative routes with the underground conduit person. And you can probably see on the diagram, you basically have to go straight down the street. And my understanding is there's some like total limit of the numbers of degrees of ang-
And my understanding is there's some like total limit of the numbers of degrees of angles. So you'd have to kind of go straight down Crescent Road to go around the water main and then we probably still have to disrupt the French drain. So I think that was the only information that I have that's not included here, but otherwise excellent summary.
Okay, questions? Anne, you want to go?
Oh, yeah, maybe for Dylan. When you did these cost estimates, you took the undergrounding and then divided by the cost of both projects. Both, if the applicant were only going to do one of the projects, would it require the undergrounding?
My understanding would be the, the solar full take system was the catalyst for that recommendation by the building inspector. So that one would definitively trigger. I think the second one, the addition and remodel, typically that does, there is an upgrade, I wouldn't, there's not a, there's not a trigger that I'm aware of, that would be a building code question that I would be unable to answer at this moment. So that would, I would say that if you were to separate out the electric, the solar one would definitively be the, the recommendation from the electrician. And I think would, would definitely trigger it. My intent in summing the two is because both of them are kind of in process and both of them are dependent of each other because the solar panel has to be attached to the electrical panel and the addition as well. So that's why I included both of them.
Okay.
That was my approach. Does that answer the question?
Yes, it does, and I think that is definitely reasonable. I just, since we're the planning commission, I just always want to think through, not, not this applicant, of course, but would another applicant have an incentive to kind of present the projects one at a time such that the undergrounding appeared to be much more substantial cost? You know, I, I don't want to go down that rabbit hole now, this was rational and good.
This is Lance, just to clarify, they are separate. And what we were told is with the remodel, we were not triggering the undergrounding because we were leaving the panel in the same place, they call it like-for-like, I believe. And then it was the, you know, solar panels that we, you know, at a later time decided to add that triggered it because of the potential relocation. And so the, the total cost for the, and so that is something we explored is, you know, just never using that. The total cost for the solar panel and electric vehicle charger is $15,200.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm, yeah. And maybe this is for both, can we go back to that map? It did jump out at me when I looked at that map, like, yeah, why, okay, there's a red line. Why, and up at the upper right is the power pole. Why can't you go, actually, I don't know what ETC stands for, I'd be curious, but why can't you go along the upper ETC line and then straight down to the left of the water main? So yes, this is a little bit longer than the straight red line and it's got one kink. But it gets you around the water main and definitely away from the big trees, so. You know, why wouldn't that work?
I think that's a great question. The, I think if you see in the photo, so just to the right, what would, what, that is, I think, possible, but it requires going through the center of the Crescent Road rather than cutting width-wise across. It would require going on a much longer path along Crescent and then turning in. So it's, I think, possible, it's just, you know, orders of magnitude more difficult because you have to replace the entire street along that path rather than just the width direction.
And to answer the question, ETC stands for, it's commonly for telephone cable wire. So it's the utilities that aren't, that aren't related to electrical service.
I see, and it's down this middle of the road, I can't see where the road is, is it marked on here? But the ETC is kind of in the middle of Crescent.
If you were, if you look at my cursor, you see that it kind of makes a K shape from the telephone pole.
Yes.
These would be those ETC lines.
Oh, I see, yeah.
Yeah, and then this is, the red line is the, oh, sorry.
Got it.
The red line is the actual service drop, oh. Power point doesn't like me now, so that would be this, this is, I'm gonna, well, it won't let me do it. But this is the, the power drop, the same as that, so that's why I was trying to match it up.
I see the arrow now, yeah, yeah, I see it, okay, okay. So maybe this is doable, but maybe there's details that make it less attractive, okay? That's all my questions.
Okay, thanks. John, how about you?
I think in terms of, are we doing, asking for information? This is just questions, okay?
Yeah.
Yeah, no, no.
Okay, Craig?
Hey Craig, you're on mute.
Sorry, I was trying to find, with the whole screen covered up with diagrams, I couldn't find the unmute, I'm good, thank you.
Okay, and Nicholas?
I'm also fine, thanks.
Yeah, I'm good. So we've heard, maybe we have a brief discussion. Oh, wait, there are attendees, I don't see any hands up for public comment, so I'll give people a chance. But if no one puts their hand up, we should bring it back for, for a brief discussion. I guess the initial question for the commission is whether there are distinguishing factors that, that make us more comfortable in, in getting into the substance tonight on this application. So I'll go on the same route of discussion, start with Anne.
Yeah, now I guess on the surface, yeah, I am not inclined for exemption because it's 5% of the project, which is below some rough threshold I have. I I would like, or I wish I had a way to get more info on whether there are other routes. I mean, if the only route that makes sense goes by a pretty big oak tree, I'd be I wouldn't want to do that or force a homeowner to do that.
What other information would you want beside the alternative routes, which he did say some were considered? But you would probably want to know what, you know, the feasibility of them, what would you like to know?
Yeah, the feasibility of a route that does not go by one of those big trees. And does that make it just a lot more expensive? Or, you know, if it disrupted the whole neighborhood longer because of the tearing up the road, that would influence me too.
It's a private road, too, sorry.
Yeah, no, well, John, go ahead.
Sorry, sorry, that just, sorry, I blurted that out. It's actually not a public road, which is, I'd like to get, I don't know how that would affect things, but it probably puts more of a burden cost on the applicant, because I think they have a little HOA for that particular road. I have no idea why, but I'm pretty sure that's true. The, in terms of your question though, around additional information. So the one thing that, that seemed different on this one was that we had more of the French drains and the water lines. And I'm wondering how to consider those. On the one hand, you know, you could say, well, that's a barrier, it's going to cost, it's disrupting them. On the other hand, clearly, when the code was put in place, I mean, people knew there were French drains and water lines and, and all of that, and the expectation was, and we're going to implement this code anyway. So I guess I'm sort of wondering if there's anything, again, I guess from a background perspective, if there was any discussion on that or anything, as Laura, you mentioned, that there might be some in the original, some of the original documents on there to help us understand, you know, is there some threshold of, you know, is it not just dollars, is it something about disruption in there? So that we could be more rational about future cases on this and make sure we're setting an appropriate precedent on what we, what we consider to be significant or not.
So John, would you want to know, for example, if other applicants that have been before the commission previously have had these particular issues and how they were factored in? As well as any guidance in the intent, or both of those? Okay, right, anything else? No, okay, Craig, how about you?
So I think, you know, at least in fairness to the previous applicant, I mean, we asked about fire safety. I mean, there are a bunch of issues that we wanted to get further clarification. I still feel like we need to get those same things. I do agree, this does seem like this project's a little bit different, so I'm glad we went through the presentation. And like Anne saying, I'd like to understand a little bit better what the alternatives are. But, but the fire safety and what PG&E is and isn't willing to do, I think we need to get some handle on. And maybe this is something that the planning department can talk to PG&E so that this isn't something where the applicants are putting down deposits. But because, I mean, PG&E's got to have at least, I mean, I think what we're looking for from PG&E is, are you unwilling to put in lines that are anything but straight? And we're not asking them to approve a particular plan, because I understand once you're doing a specific plan, then I think it's reasonable for an applicant to put down a deposit with PG&E. But this is a more general, we as a town are trying to understand the requirements that PG&E is putting on our residents.
Okay. Um, anything else?
That's it, thank you.
Okay, Nicholas, what else? I mean, any comments, but also in particular, what information would you want to be brought forward if this area is extended?
Think we might have lost him.
Oh. Okay. Well.
If, if I may through the chair, just for the good of the record, in response to the coupling of both of the permits, I just wanted to provide, if we were to take the solar full take permit standalone based on Lance's comment that that was the catalyst for the, the requirements, the undergrounding. If you take the cost, the additional cost per the original permit, the permit card has 16,000 as a project valuation, so I'm going to use that. I have a cost of 148.8% in comparison to the original application and the additional, the 23,780, it's actually 23,810 if you add the 290.37 per linear foot. I just wanted to add that just for the good of the record. Based on Lance's comment, I just wanted to respond to that, thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, I do, I do think if we're going to use that as a basis for discussion, then I'd also like to understand whether there are alternative locations for the solar panels that wouldn't require relocating the panel. Because I understand that there was a plan and then the inspector looked at it. And given the, the plan as stated, the inspector said it needed to be moved. But if you didn't want to move the panel because you didn't want to do the undergrounding, the question is, would that preclude doing solar? Or whether you could still do solar in some other creative way? And then there was also EV charger, which presumably, if you're going to, I assume you've got 100 amp service, but I don't know. But if you, if you're going up in service because you're putting in EV charger, because I mean, certainly the two, the level two or level three use considerably more power.
Okay, all right, so I think similarly, until Nicholas joins again, it, to me, if we are going to PG&E and asking, what is the framework versus a straight shot? What, what are the degrees of freedom you, you offer to applicants in general? If they give that guidance, then we also need to know what the incremental cost to do the long route would be. Making some simplistic assumptions. Because, you know, I do think this, the per foot costs add up and I think that goes to feasibility and practicability to me as well. And I think if we got more information on that, it would be helpful, and then the trenching and the ability to work through these water line and the French drain issues here. To me, I'm skeptical that those can easily be worked around without major issues, but, but I want to know, I don't want to assume, I want to know and have that confirmed. I do think that we, you know, I'm personally careful to not go so far as to think that practicable and feasible means you've got to majorly redo and delay your project. So I'm also concerned about the impact, as the neighbor said, on what that trenching would look like and cost, but also in terms of disruption. Some context around the additional disruption that would be incurred and delays. I think those are what we're required to consider in terms of practicability and feasibility. So I'd like, like to see that. I am not seeing Nicholas come back, so.
So I just talked to him, he got a blue screen of death. He was going to, he was going to try to get on the phone.
Okay.
He is working on it, I'm, I don't know whether he'll make it on or not, but at least he didn't just decide to leave.
I'm sure.
He did leave a message, so my computer just gave me the blue screen of death. I am not sure I agree that the full cost of the remodel belongs in the denominator. Therefore, I believe the question of practicality may differentiate this project from the last.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
That's, that's the number Dylan gave us, right? So all of a sudden it goes to 148% maybe?
Correct.
Yeah.
If you subtract, if you just have the standalone solar voltaic, which is 16,000, it does take out the larger amount, correct?
On the other hand, I think Craig also pointed out that may have had to up the service on the house to put in a car charger. And that would trigger it, so we probably should know that.
Yeah, yeah. All that makes sense, so Laura, do you have, it's both sounding to me like we want to continue this and that you hopefully have enough guidance on additional information. Do you have any questions that would put you in a better position to, to have a productive next session? Do you need anything else from us?
I think we have good information to go forward.
Okay, and it sounds like the applicant is, is comfortable, but I do want to check back with him one last time here. With a
Yeah, I, I'm comfortable with going back, I think I captured all of that. I think the ones I can clarify in real time are, it is the relocation of the panel for clearance reasons. And that was because of the solar install, the moving the solar panel doesn't influence that at all. If that makes sense and is helpful. So, so yes, this was a separate, you know, electrical issue, there was no electrical upgrade from the remodel itself. And then the EV charger actually doesn't even exist, we're just plugging it into the one 10 volt thing, but so it's just a solar in actuality. I think that was the only other, other information I caught.
Okay, well, thank you, and thank you, we're trying to make sure we make a fully informed decision and appreciate your, your willingness to provide additional information. Craig, did you have anything?
Just wanted to make sure that we gave the applicant a chance to weigh in, so that was it.
Yeah, okay, all right, if no one else has anything, we should have a motion to continue.
I move that we continue the second item of new business, the request for an exception to utility undergrounding requirement at 142 Crescent Avenue.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And Nicholas is not present, so we'll assume he abstains. Um, great, well, thank you very much, we'll look forward to revisiting the application in, at a future session.
Yeah, maybe we'll have a meeting on the 16th after all.
Great, um, all right, then we move on to the commission's staff committee reports.
Hey guys.
Yep, oh, hey, hey.
Hey, I'm so sorry, I ended up getting a blue screen of death, uh, which, uh, has never happened frankly with this computer period, much less on a Zoom call, so I apologize.
Well, it's good to have you back, I don't know what the right rules are. What, what we had assumed was you were not coming back, and we did, um, offer, uh, guidance on further information and, and, uh, voted to continue, but we had said you had abstained from that. So Laura, for proper protocol here, what do we do? Now he's back.
Um, I would suggest we just leave it as it is, and we'll make a notation in that minutes. I think this is just Zoom meeting life.
Yeah.
Um, unless somebody has a different suggestion, so.
I, I think the only thing that I might add is, I probably, I'm a, not sure I agree with the denominator for the cost. And I may, uh, reach out to staff on that point, but I'm completely fine with the direction. And I have, uh, nothing further to, to add on the matter that's now closed. But I may subsequently round up.
Nicholas, we did read your comment in to the minutes, your email.
That I've got absolutely nothing more to add.
Right, I actually suspect you were ordering another Mai Tai on your island there. Okay, so commission reports, um, so I was supposed to be the liaison to the ASCC, but, um, in COVID times, um, I got the time wrong. It was on my calendar for the old time. So Laura, what's the best thing? Should I listen to the meeting and then report at the next meeting? Or do you have an overview on what's coming up? Cause I know there was something important discussed that I have to catch up on.
Um, so the ASCC considered an application from the Fire District for an expansion and remodel of Station Number Eight, um, on Portola Road. There were one right there in the middle of town. And so there was detailed discussion about that and about the design. There were, um, a number of comments from the adjacent neighbors that were an important part of that conversation. The ASCC, um, after much consideration, decided to move it forward to the Planning Commission because there are kind of, I would call them gating issues, um, where the authority rests with the Planning Commission. So the ASCC wanted to see those issues addressed first before they looked specifically at some of the design, um, issues that, you know, kind of felt in that moment secondary, and perhaps they would be moot if some of the other zoning gating issues couldn't be resolved. So we will be working with the applicant, um, to bring that project forward to the Planning Commission. We do not have a schedule for that yet. The, one of the advantages of the Zoom meetings is we do have the links, and we have been making the links available to people, um, if they request them. So, um, Chair Hasko, you can definitely wash, watch that meeting if you'd like to, um, to catch up on that. And then, of course, there'll be detailed minutes and a detailed staff report when it does come forward to the Planning Commission.
Great, thank you.
Laura, could, could I suggest you send the link out to the ASCC recording to, to all the commissioners? I mean, I, I think a fire station being public safety and all is a pretty important issue. Um, and if we have the option to watch it in addition to looking at the minutes, it seems like it might be valuable.
And you meant the Planning Commission, not the ASCC, right?
I'm, I meant the, the link to the ASCC sent out to the Commission, if that, if I was not clear, yes, that is what I intended.
Yeah, okay, great, I agree.
Hey, on that point is, well, uh, does the town have jurisdiction over the actions of the Fire District, uh, itself? Or is the Fire District an independent entity that has its own land use and zoning authority? Like a school or a state college or fairground?
They do not have their own land use authority. So there are separate agency acting as the applicant and is required to go through the town's land use procedures.
That's really interesting.
And, and does, does the town have anything to say about public safety? I mean, because this is obviously very different than a residence would be. Do, do we have a way to think about this as something other than a residence?
Um, I think that that's important for the decision-making bodies for ASCC and Planning Commission to, um, balance those priorities, and some of that discussion is in the general plan. Do you know what I mean? And evaluating consistency with the general plan, um, ensuring, you know, the safety element, ensuring the general welfare of the community. So I think some of that is captured in some of the findings and should be part of the decision-making process.
Okay, so when you create a staff report for this, that you'll include some of that information?
Um, some of it will be included, and we would also look to the Fire District to provide kind of the connection between the physical project that they're proposing and the connection to the public safety. So that's one thing that we'll be asking them for that wasn't really, uh, that didn't really come forward very much in the ASCC review. So we'll be asking for some of that information from them.
Okay, great, thank you.
Any other commission reports from anyone? Not hearing any, um, how about staff reports, anything that we should be aware of, Laura?
Um, two things, when we had the cannabis annual update, we let you know that there was one pending code enforcement case at that time for a potential cannabis business. So we have investigated that, and there was not a cannabis business of that location. So we have closed that code enforcement case, um, so you asked for that update, so that's all taken care of. Um, and then the second thing is that the ASCC has been working on a couple of different initiatives. One of them is to have what they're calling kind of earlier involvement in some projects, especially those that may have questions around site planning, um, and kind of trade-offs between, you know, key, um, aspects of the projects. And so they have asked for, um, and we are implementing on a trial basis, a new, very early kind of review. The town has done this on and off over the years. Nobody's requested it of me except for one project, um, from Carter's office, to do a very early kind of conceptual review. Um, but we're gonna be doing that for three projects, um, and that, the first time we're doing it is next Monday on the 7th. So these are three applications that are very early in their development, that are gonna go to ASCC to get feedback, to see if that helps them in developing their plans further, um, and leads to a smoother process, perhaps less neighbor issues, um, perhaps an easier approval. So they asked us to give this a try, these three applicants volunteered to do this, and they understand that they're, um, kind of the guinea pigs. And then we'll learn from that process and then decide if we want to implement something kind of more formal that we would post and create some little checklist for and make this, uh, and kind of an advertised path that applicants would be able to go down. So I wanted to let you know that that, um, is happening, uh, in response to their feedback. So we wanted to go ahead and get right on that, because we had a couple of projects that we thought would be well-served by that. So we're starting that process next week. Um, the other thing that ASCC has asked us to do is to start keeping a list of projects that are in review, um, and so that they have a sense of what's gonna be upcoming to them. So I would propose if the commission is interested, that we would share that list with you as well. One of the things I'm thinking about is maybe just make it a standard attachment to the packet, um, that you receive, so you would just know what projects are upcoming. So we, they would not be on an agenda, we wouldn't talk about them, but you would just have that as information. And then as individual commissioners, if you had a question, you would know that you could contact me and ask individual questions, but that would give you a sense of what the upcoming projects are. So if you're interested in that, we could give it to you as well.
Yeah, Laura, on that, you're talking about giving us ASCC projects that are coming up, so that we can anticipate those, is that what you're saying?
Um, we would actually make the list of all of the projects, whether the ultimate decision is by ASCC or Planning Commission. And so that way, we wouldn't separate them out, we would just have one big active project list.
And, and Laura, so if that was attached to our handouts, then that would be public information? Am I correct?
Yes.
Cause I know there's been some interest in what's happening, what's coming, and that would seem to be an easy way, uh, for people to get that information.
Yeah, because we've received public comments as well as from ASCC. So we thought we'd take care of both things at once by doing that. So then anyone who opens an ASCC or Planning Commission agenda packet would have the current list of projects.
Yeah, I think, I think that's a positive thing, um, I would like that list myself.
And can I ask, on this early project review of which December 7th has the first one, are those still noticed to all the neighbors?
Yes, they are still noted.
So what's the difference? I mean, it, it's super early stage, is there administratively like a, a new fee? Like, what's, what's different, um, about this for the applicant?
So for these three, we are taking them as, um, still pre-application phase. So they have not submitted formal applications, um, we're collecting just enough money to, we're basically writing a very brief cover memo that just goes over the development standards, that whether it meets the most basic zoning standards. Passing forward to the ASCC, any questions that staff has, things that we want to bring to their attention? And then passing forward any questions that the applicant may have. So if they're trying to make a decision, you know, and something related to their site plan, the height versus the grading, you know, would be a common thing, you know, we could dig down further, but we're increasing the grading by doing that. So maybe that's a question that they could ask the ASCC and get the ASCC feedback on. So this is our first, um, take at it, and then we'll see what we learn from it, and then we'll decide if this is a good approach.
Yeah.
The application much less complete than what the ASCC normally sees. So it'll be kind of basic topographic survey site plan, floor plan, elevations, but not all the detailed civil plans, not all the detailed landscape plans, kind of as far as the applicant has developed it so far, is what will be, um, taken to them to get input.
And they'd still envision, the ASCC would still envision to, uh, like what they usually do, a preliminary and a final review, those, so there'd end up being three meetings with them?
Well, I think part of the idea with this is that you may still only end up with two. So if you've got really good feedback and you prepare a really good application, then staff would prepare that for, um, the next time it would be reviewed, it would be prepared for final review. ASCC could also, of course, take more time if they need it. Um, so that's one of the things that they wanted to, um, consider. You know, what are the different ways to get input in on the project, but not, um, increase the cost or the time, um, overall involved?
Interesting. Okay. Anybody else have anything? I think we're at the end of our agenda. All right. Well, thank you, everybody, thank you, Lauren Dillon, and, um, we'll look forward to seeing whether we're gonna meet again this year.
We'll let you know.
Uh, do we need a motion to end the meeting?
That's Craig's job.
Motion, motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor? All right, meeting is, uh, adjourned, thanks guys.
Thanks.
Everybody.
Thank you very much.
Happy holidays.
Yes, me too, if I don't see ya.
Good night.
Bye.
Good night.